Concerns, because each side will be allowed ten minutes to speak. Plots, rezoning, revised master plans and street names require public hearing. After which the planning commissioner, planning commission will deliberate and render its decision. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioners request are required to recuse themselves. If a motion is to deny his request, if a motion to deny a request is made, a reason must be given. Tonight, we have Reggie Dunn, Buddy Hardwick, Reginald Hawkins, and Leslie Stone, and myself, James Reed. Members of the land use staff are Warren Adams and Tanya Ingram. Did everybody get a chance to read over the minutes? Are there any changes? Any comments to the minutes from the last meeting? If not, a motion is in order?
Move to approve.
Check it.
A motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of last month. All those in favor? Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. Tanya, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Number three, flowers and white requesting to rezone three parcels on Fisher Road has been delayed.
Okay.
Number eleven, Larry Speaks and Associates requesting to rezone eleven acres on McGee Road has also been delayed.
Okay.
That's the old Montgomery Mall. And we're going to move number seven up to the first item. Jeffco Engineers rezoning one parcel containing thirteen acres on the northwest corner of Selma Highway and Richardson Road North from R sixty-five as an M-one to an M-one district.
All right.
Good afternoon. Steve Hughes with Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, representing back forty for this rezoning request. And also, we have Mr. Ed Fleming. If you have any non-technical questions, he's met with the surrounding neighborhood about this request.
Okay, could you please tell us what you're doing?
They're requesting this thirteen acre parcel, thirteen point three nine acre parcel, to be rezoned in its entirety to M-one. There's a southern portion of it, southern two hundred and fifty feet off of eighty is M-one now. Requesting the entire parcel be rezoned to M-one.
Far?
Excuse me?
Uh, rezoned for what? What is your, what is your intended use?
I'll let Ed field that one.
Yeah, thank you. Ed Fleming with Hodges Commercial Real Estate. Yeah, we've been asked, we have, like I said, about three acres, a little more, that's already zoned M-one. We've been asked by the contractor that's going to do work at Danley Field, building two huge buildings out there to set up a staging area where they could drop off materials, steel, whatever, and then move it across to Danley Field when they get ready for a construction project that'll probably start in twenty twenty-four and probably take two, three years to build. I think it's like four hundred thousand square feet each, two buildings. I have met with the neighborhood. We originally put in here, we wanted to rezone all thirteen acres, but we talked to them and said we would be glad to just do up to ten acres and leave a three acre buffer between them and the neighborhood and the city park. And so that's what I discussed with them the other night when we all met.
You said they expect the start will be twenty twenty-four. Do you know when?
I believe so, yes. Yes, sir.
But you don't have specifically when?
No, he's just gathering his information to put in with his contract offer to the government of how he's going to proceed to do the construction.
And you said approximately end date will be around three years, two years, three years?
Something that big, I'd say at least three years, yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission members?
I have one question. With them working, is this the National Guard project?
Uh, no, this is actually for the F-one thirty-five, some support buildings they're building out there to, my understanding is to house some of the pilots when they do training and that kind of thing. I don't have any specifics on the deal.
When you had a meeting with the, with the neighbors, how did that, how did that go?
Uh, they were very cajal, very nice. We had a good time visiting. They had several complaints that they registered with me. One, that the road, the city road was not really set up for tractor trailers currently and that the city didn't keep it up enough. They had problems with some police efforts in the area. Then the other thing they said was it would be nice to have a red light on Highway eighty, turn in, turn off at that, at that Richardson Road location. And then the other thing specific to our, our part is that when there are big storms come through, a lot of times the trees that are on the property will fall across the road and it takes a day or two to get them up. By us cutting the trees and moving that back, that'll alleviate that particular problem.
Okay, with the meeting, did you, did you guys come to a meeting of the minds?
No, sir.
Did you come to settle it?
No, sir.
All right. Any other questions from members? All right. Could we have the questions, the comments from members of the audience at this time? Please come forward. Could you give us your name and address and your concerns?
My name is Cynthia Calvin. My address is forty-three ten Longleaf Drive in Danley Pines. And our concern as the neighbor, we have several our residents here today, this evening, is that we is not against progress and we are not against them using that portion of the land for the drop-off zone. But what our concern is, if they cannot use up to the ten acres that he want to use, we are asking them at least to use the seven and not use Richardson Road as they drive through. We barely has enough space on Richardson Road for just regular cars to be going in and out. And we just got clearance, fairway to be hitting going out of Richardson Road through eighty since they moved the entrance from the base down to the other end because that used to be a really big congestion for the neighborhood to be getting in and out, going to work or coming into that nature. And also, we are asking that instead of the ten acres, like I said, they can use seven and leave us more than a three clearance from, from the park because by that being a wooded area, we already know once you start disturbing that with your trees, removing trees and stuff like that, whatever's living in that area will start peeling over into our neighborhood. That we are against and that we are looking to have that cease. Now, once they, I think I heard you say that the project should last about three years or so. Now, once you have completed that project and if you rezone that whole entire area, then anybody can come in and start building in commercial in that area and sort of like blocking us in as a resident. And we understand that part of it is already commercially zoned. Do you really need the whole thirteen acres like he's saying that they want to have in that area so that we as a resident can have a safety net from the commercial end? Anybody else have any? Go ahead.
And we have another. Go ahead. My name is.
Name and address.
Yeah, your name and address. And, and, and let me, let me say something else that if you're going to say the same thing, uh, you know, keep it brief. Uh, but if you come up to the mic, make another point because we, we can't hear the same thing over and over and over and over. Do you understand what I'm saying? We'll be here all night. Now, go ahead, ma'am.
I understand very well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Um, I agree with Ms. Calvin, everything that she said. And my concern is, um, not you, uh, well, my address, my name is Vernice King, forty-four fifteen Richardson Road. So this will be at my front door practically.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, having a traffic light there, that's all well and good.
Having a traffic light where?
At, uh, eight, Richardson and eighty. But my concern is, if we get it the way we want it and they get another entrance, that entrance be on eighty, there's going to be a problem if they're going to use their Richardson Road gate versus the gate that they have down on Highway eighty to move all their materials. So they move their material from an exit area and an entrance area on eighty and take it down to the, um, the eighty gate, the Highway eighty gate at Danley Field, that will help us very much with all the traffic and all that. Besides, uh, you killing the deer and the deer won't be coming anymore. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Calvin Thomas, forty-five, forty-three Pine Park Drive. My concern is what would happen with our taxes and everything with all this coming in? And another question, what else could we do besides rezoning it to still go and let it stay residential? Or anything we could do for them to use it and then go back to residential?
Uh, could you please repeat that, that, that last part?
What, is it anything we could do for them to utilize that property without changing the zone?
No.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Schufert. I live at forty-three fifty-nine Longleaf Drive. My concern is what happens after the three years? Uh, we live in this neighborhood. We raise our children in this neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We love it. What happens to the property values? What happens to the, after they done staging? What's to say that they decide to put a junkyard on Highway eighty in front of our neighborhood? I really think that, that that property should to remain residentially zoned uh, because I really do feel that that, that neighborhood has the potential to continue to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me bring him back up. One of you guys. And, and could, could you please address a couple things?
Okay.
The traffic light. Let's start with the easy one first. Uh, the traffic light. Uh, you're talking about putting one on the corner of Richardson and? And, uh?
Highway, yes, sir.
And now that's, you would have to get with the city or the county or something to do that correctly.
We'd have to, have to petition the state for an entrance on US eighty. Whether they would grant that or not is, is up to them.
You're talking about an additional entrance?
Well, if we were to try attempting an entrance on US eighty, we'd have to apply for a permit from ALDI, which may or may not.
Ed, how close is the, is the traffic light that is to the, uh, east of, of Richardson Road?
How far from?
Yeah, about, just about. I mean, I know you can't.
Half a mile or better, in front of the airport is where the.
It's right there at the airport. Okay, all right, I got you then. Okay. So this, this location is, there is some distance between them because that's the big problem with the state. They don't want to, they don't want a highway that's, that's got, you know, dotted with.
I got you, yes.
Traffic signals.
Yes.
Well, okay. But you're not telling these people tonight that you're getting a, a, a traffic light there?
Oh, no, sir. I, no way I'd be able, that's.
I, I understand that. I just want to make sure they understand.
No.
Yeah.
No.
So, um, okay.
Now, and, and I think, if, if I'm not mistaken, I think somebody asked about the access to what you're doing from Selma Highway. What is that possible?
From the Selma?
Well, uh, Highway.
Eighty.
Highway eighty?
That's what we were just discussing. We'd have to apply for a permit from ALDI to get a proposed entrance off of eighty.
Well, let me ask you this. If, um, if you could, and you're not going to know until, I mean, you know, you're, you're, you're months away from knowing from the state whether you could or couldn't.
Well, unless they're adamant about it.
I'm sorry?
Unless they are adamantly against it.
Well.
We had one project where we proposed it to them and they were like, no way, we're not going to do that.
Well, that's the ones you go after hard. Uh, the challenges.
I realize they don't want to populate.
The challenges are there.
That right way, but a lot of projects.
This, um, this access off of eighty sounds like if y'all did a, if y'all were able to do so. Um, it sounds like the best way to solve this because then it doesn't affect the, uh, the people out there on, in, in Richardson Road.
We, we would not be applying for another entrance. Uh, uh, there's no telling what it would cost. Just the cost, of course, we had estimated on ten acres. If, if they would allow us to do seven, of course, it would bring it down. The cost to clear the land, put the gravel, put everything down where a truck could turn in and turn out is about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And to fence it all up and put everything like it needs to be, what they would ask for. So, because already Richardson Road has a turn-in lane or a decel lane now, you know, that would have to be all added in to the cost if we moved it, moved it down somewhere.
So you're thinking about being able to go up Richardson Road and turn into the property with no decel lane off of Richardson or anything?
There is a decel lane at Richardson.
On this property, to this one?
Not, not on this property, not on Richardson Road, but there is on, on Highway eighty.
There's a, uh, you've got a decel lane on Highway eighty?
Yeah, turn in.
Already?
Yeah, turning into Richardson Road.
Oh, to turn on?
Oh, to Richardson Road.
Oh, I see. I got you. Yeah, I got you. Okay. Okay, yeah.
All right, let me ask you this then. Uh, and the, the, the other part that they were asking is that, uh, if this is going to take between two, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever, are you willing to have a qualifier in there for the rezoning that the limp, the limitations of that rezoning would only be until that project is finished? Is that okay with you?
I think that would be okay as long as it didn't affect the, the zoning that we have on the original three acres up front now. That'd be for the next four, however many acres are big.
What, what, what are you asking?
I mean, we already have M-one on the, on three acres now. We're asking to go to ten or the seven.
Are you talking about in the front or the rear?
Right.
Are you talking about in the front or the rear of this property you were saying? Are, are, is it three acres on Highway eighty?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Are you asking to rezone, is that part of this rezon?
Well, it's already zoned M-one. We're just asking to extend that zoning up to the rest of the property. And now we said we'd go to ten and they've asked to go to seven, which we'll do seven.
I think to clarify some of our acreages that we've been talking about, we asked originally for thirteen and some change.
Right.
They would rather us have a three acre buffer roughly, so.
But that's in the back though, right?
It would be a total, yeah, exactly. But it would be a total of ten acres from the right of way of eighty to back that we're asking for. I, I think originally you were thinking it might have been ten and we were going to take three off, but it's really thirteen and we're going to take three off to leave.
Okay, okay. So, so you are including the three. Now, my question is this. After this project is completed, are you willing to leave it as that zoning?
As the M-one zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, we could leave it all M-one. Yeah.
Okay. Let's just say, and, and, and this is ugly. Let's just say your project didn't go through. Or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Whatever happens, it didn't go through.
Right, yes, sir.
Would you qualify this, it goes back to the original zoning if your project did not go through?
We could do the qualifying on the part that you, that we're asking to be changed.
Yes.
But not on the original three acres that's all, that matches up with Highway eighty.
Right.
So, yeah, the extra, whatever they would, y'all are kind enough to give us, yeah, that would be fine.
Which is a complement of seven acres.
Which is probably approximately seven acres. If we went up to the full ten acres or however much we can get to.
Yes.
Tanya?
They would agree to.
Can that be done?
Are you saying that after their use is finished, that the seven acres?
No. I, I.
I'm confused.
What we were talking about is suppose something happened to this project and the project don't get completed. Could we make a qualifier so that it can go back to the original zoning?
No, you would have, you would have to rezone it back to that.
Okay.
You can only qualify, if, if you rezone it to a M-one, you can put qualifications on the M-one to restrict it to certain uses, but it cannot revert back to residential without going back through a zoning process.
Okay. All right.
I got a question, Mr. Phil. If, and, and it's basically to the residents that live out there. So, so basically if we rezone this property to M-one and we qualify it to where maybe the only thing after the staging, after that project over with and they get all their equipment out of there, all the stuff that they store and they're gone. And if we qualify that, that it, this property could only be a restaurant, a hotel or something like that, especially with the expansion of the airport, I mean, we need hotels and stuff in that area. So if we was to put a qualification on it, that that property could only be something like that, would you guys be okay with that? I mean, that's the question that I'd like to ask the residents.
I would, I would ask so. I don't know exactly what the M-one excludes, but, yeah, hotel or something like that, I mean.
I think he's asking the residents that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just want to know because, see, they live there. They, they've invested there and I'd like to know how they feel about that.
Honestly, we are trying our best not to get it at all. But we do understand that we cannot stop some of it. We understand that. But our question is, if you're saying that with the ten acres, thirteen acres totally, is that what you're telling me?
Well, they're, they're willing to only zone, rezone an additional seven that the front is already done.
We, yeah, we already know that part is already done. So you want additional seven?
Seven, that would be a total of eight.
So.
And it has approximately where we set that flag stake for you the other day, so we can have a seat.
Yes, okay. But when you're using, we're trying our best to keep you off of Richardson Road, you really need to get your own road. That is really what we're saying. We don't want them using, Richardson Road is already had, patched up from the last time they had work done down on Old Hamba Road. We just got Old Hamba Road paved out of the last four years after they did that work. Just got it paved this year. Our road has been patched. It has not been completely paved. So when these big dump trucks, uh, trucks start coming through, as we said earlier, that going to either tear up more of our road. We don't have a, um, a, a really large area on our road because you got a ditch on one side, you got sidewalk on, on the other side. So now you're taking that when he is making these, um, thirteen acres to come in that area to get out, to go back in. So we want you, we, we understand we can't stop the progress. That is not what we're trying to do. But try, we're trying our best to not add all of these other buildings in front of our neighborhood, on our neighborhood, in our neighborhood because you already know, once you start that, you're opening up a whole bunch of worms. And that's what we do not want. Okay?
Do you understand their concerns? Do you understand their concerns?
Need to come up to the mic, please.
Tanya.
I'm Patricia Bassett.
Tanya, is this in the, um, city limits or is this in the, uh, police jurisdiction?
The city.
It is in the city?
Hi, I'm Patricia Bassett. I'm a resident of Danley Pines. I've been there thirty-eight years. Um, I was against it the time they came down last week for the meeting. I'm against it now because it's not enough space on that road. We have children walking up and down to their convenience stores. A gas station that sits right in front of there. They walks in and there, you're coming into the neighborhood sometime. Eighteen-year-olds are sitting right on the road and you can't see to get in and can't see to get out. So this is going to create a problem. And I rode through the neighborhood after he left and I went down there Saturday again. Right on Alatex Road, right on that road, it's a whole bunch of Aaronart Realty property where if they want to put the fighter wings or whatever. It's the same, this is not going to deface our neighborhood. We're trying to build up the neighborhood by keeping it beautiful, by them bringing that in. It's not going to do nothing because a lot of congestion. We got to go to work. How are we going to get out of here on time? They want us to go around the side roads. That's, that's inconvenient to neighbors. And I, I, I was against it then and I'm against it now. And I think we all are against it. I'm for progress, but like he said, we want to bring something in the neighborhood that's going to make the neighborhood look good. Not bringing in stuff that going to make the road, we barely can get on the road sometimes. Like you said there, I know you say we repeat, they're a pothole, but sometimes we have to get way to the side. I was about to go down. So where are these trucks going to be if we trying to come out? We already got, uh, resident passing each other, trying to get out in a hurry. So if those trucks are turning in, what are we going to do?
Let me ask you something. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, and, and we understand, we understand totally what y'all concerns are. Matter of fact, y'all concerns are my concern.
Yes.
My question was, what is it that y'all would like to see if we rezone this property, M-one?
Most homes.
What is it that y'all would like to see that way we as a planning commission can qualify that it could be only that?
Name? If the property.
Name?
Christopher Schufert, forty-three fifty-nine Longleaf Drive. If the property has to be rezoned, why not put something that, that the neighborhood needs, a grocery store? Um, or something that where our elderly in the community can, can get some fresh fruit and vegetables without being inconvenienced? We, we already feel like we are the, the, the forgotten neighborhood of the city. Um, we, we are part of the, the west side of Montgomery. We are proud to be, um, in our neighborhood. It just feels like we, we're just being forgotten and, and, and thrown away.
Ed, let me ask you another question if I could. What is the alternative for, for that group that would like to use it for staging? If you can't get it done, what's their alternative?
They would, I guess, have to look for another spot. But this is a spot that they ask about and so I'm, you know, working for my guy.
You know what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I'm working for the owner and I'm working for the contractor asking about it.
I understand.
I mean, but so.
But, but, but that's the only alternative is that they're going to have to have a staging area somewhere, okay?
Yes, it's, it's going to have, it's going to have to be some staging areas, yes.
And there's, there's, is the property that they're building on, is why could that not be utilized up there?
It's on the airport.
Well, that does make a little problem for airplanes coming in and out, doesn't it?
Yes, that, that's the, you know, they're going to put those buildings on the airport so there's not a whole lot of extra land.
Well, if you're going to have buildings there, why can't you use it as staging?
I, you, I'm not the contractor.
I do understand.
I've just saved what they said they needed.
Okay, okay.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and I'm, I'm not a negotiator by any means, but let me ask you this then. If the, if the rezoning got passed, and you got into the project, would you have a problem with only the eighteen-wheelers coming through between nine and two, maybe, uh, during the day, and at night? So that it wouldn't interfere with them going back and forth to work in the morning and in the afternoon?
I would say that probably the reason he wants a staging area is because these tractor-trailers coming through there, tractors, whatever, they're, to make a delivery, you just drop it off and leave it. There's, there's no way to kind of set times for them on that. Uh, not, not that I could see, there might could be, but I don't know what would be the appropriate times to do that, I, I couldn't say.
Ma'am, you'd have to come up to the, to the mic. You'd have to come up to the mic.
What I was saying is that I've wrote, I've driven through Alatex Road, there's, it's right down from us probably forest outside of that building, where they can have their staging, it's right across from that armory. There's Alatex Road, it's got a whole lot of, uh, business district down there, what's the name of that, um, is it, uh, Pump Heart Hyundai, is it Hyundai? They down there business, on that side, the same amount of property that he's talking about, it's a whole lot of trees I've seen where they done, somebody have made a road to go up through those trees, and that property is by Aaronard, I know his property is by, what's the name of that? Hodges. I think they're set trying to sell that property, but all that, if they want to build the F- fifteen fighter jet, all that property is right there, if you all take time to ride down there, it's a whole lot of property, it's already a business district. And if we, we don't want our, our community to face like that, because they don't, they don't tell you that they can come in a certain time, but what if they're delayed, they're not gonna come in a certain time. They gonna be right there in the road, in our way, then we gonna have to go the back roads.
Okay, I, I, like I said, I'm not a negotiator.
So, we are not for it, so please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you guys want to come back up? Okay, one more person.
Lauren Grace, forty-three, forty-six, Longleaf Drive. And, uh, that, that turn-in that he talking about from eighty to, uh, Richardson Road, it's in hard shape already. Uh, it's small, it's a small turn-in, and, uh, it's already, uh, they passed, cause that pasture had holes in it, water was sitting there, and, uh, like she said, but Alatex Road is zoned for business, because, uh, the, uh, gym, right, I think whatever company was going through there before building something, uh, was taking dirt out the back, uh, they, they told them to go down Alatex Road after they had messed our road up. And, but, uh, it, it's already zoned for, uh, cons, uh, I guess, M whatever down on Alatex Road. But I said that turn-in is in bad shape already.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, and, after Mr. Flim, well, let, let's let the councilwoman speak, please.
Okay.
How you doing, Audrey Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you need my address too? I'm the city council.
No.
Um, so, you know, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hodge and his, uh, partners, I appreciate the young man who owns the property, um, and I appreciate this community coming out tonight, too, a large number of them, I so appreciate that. Um, but I did have concerns from the beginning as well, and I just want to share my concerns for the records. Uh, for the record, uh, that, uh, egress that we have right there, attorney, and I agree, is so small, uh, that's gonna have to be upgraded, and that's not something they're gonna be required to do, that's the city street. Uh, well, it's a state street, state road, but it's turning into that, that street there, and so, it's gonna fall on the state or the city to do that, I'm not sure which one would do that. Um, I know for myself, we've asked them to repave that road, and then even after we've got a couple patches done up there, it's still not like it need to be, um, and I think that there's an issue with the road altogether, so if you start driving those eighteen-wheelers, that road is not gonna do well at all for this community, and that's really the main entrance. The other entrance is to take them back by, um, behind their commu- community, like through the woods to come around a whole, and that's unfair to them when they have an entrance right there to do that. Um, as well as, I also think that, um, you know, like you said, coming out of the community, there's no way to turn right if somebody's right there waiting to go cross. So then you got traffic bagged all the way up, because we don't have that. That's something also that's not there, uh, for this community, and I think that, um, if, you know, because we were talking about what would we like to see, uh, this community like to see there, that three acres is already zon- zoned M1, we, you don't need seven more to put a, uh, uh, hotel, or, yeah, any kind of, you know, business like that, a restaurant, you don't need that much property, um, to do that. So, I still encourage to bring those businesses to that area. We're not saying, just as Ms., uh, Calvin said from the beginning, we're not trying to stop progress, we want that. But inside the borders of that community is a little different. Um, and then the last thing, I think that, you know, if for some reason, this community hadn't appealed to you to not do it altogether, and you are considering, I ask that you not vote tonight, and that you give them an opportunity to come back saying that they have approval for all, for some of those things, they need to, like, some of that stuff need to be laid out before we do it, because if we prove, approve it tonight as is, what they got is what they gonna have, it's not gonna change, it's not gonna be any different, it's gonna be like the outcry, this community was not heard, and that we didn't hear what they said, and that's unfair to them. Um, they can't move, now, this company, they saying this job is three years. After the three years, somebody else might come in there and stay ten, twenty, forty, fifty years, but they there. They're not going anywhere, there's no, there's no oppor- option for them to just say, oh, well, we'll move, because we don't want to be here, that's not gonna happen. And like they say, their children walk up that sidewalk and go to that, that little service station right there. Uh, we just have all of those things to be concerned about, and I just think just doing it like this, it's not it, it's not it. So, if we can't get some guarantee that they can get the entrance off of eighty, um, if we can't get some guarantees that we can have, probably not the traffic light, just to be honest, they may or may not do that, I'm not sure about that. But to, to build up that, uh, that egress to turn into the community and create one to turn out, so that people who are going to the right can continue to go, they don't have to wait for that line of traffic if you have a couple trucks coming out, um, they don't have to be bagged up in the community, if some of those things can't be, um, agreed that they can be done, whatever it is, then I just think this, this is, this is not for this community, and, and, uh, we should really consider this community in this. I'm asking you to consider this community and their concerns here today, as the city council. Thank you.
Ed, Ed, let me ask you another question. Let me ask you another question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, you gotta know the math, you got five. One person voting against it, it fails. Do, are you sure you want to be in front of this tonight?
I'm always proud to come and be in front of y'all.
Okay, so you want to vote tonight, is, that's what I'm hearing.
If we put it off, it would be
It's gonna be the same thing, the same issues, if you put it off.
Well, but there'd be more folks here, so what you're trying to say is
I, I just want to make sure you understand that, uh, I mean, I, I think you understand that, that it's probably not gonna pass, okay?
Yes.
In fact, I bet on it.
Okay.
But, uh, but in, 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 I, you're gonna face the same identical situation, whether we got nine, or whether we got five. And if you want the vote, which we're willing to do, um, I think, you know, we'll, we'll do it right now.
Yes, sir.
You, you don't want to talk to them again? Put it off and talk to them again, and, and try, and try, at least try to work something out, as opposed to getting a vote right now?
Uh, we'll be glad to do that, as far as how, how big a piece it would be, if it was, the total was three that we have now, and add four to make it a total, so, yeah, we can talk about all of that. But I, I just can't tell you that I'd be able to put in another entrance to the property, besides the Richardson Road entrance.
No, I mean, we're not saying that.
Mr. Chair, point of order, I, I, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, call for a motion, we, we've been going on with this for twenty minutes.
Okay, so
I'd like, I'd like to call for a motion.
But, but it's up to him, do you want the vote tonight?
Mr. Ed, you want to talk to, yeah, we can postpone it till the next month.
Okay.
If that's okay with y'all.
I mean, it's okay with us, we're not, you know, we're not doing the project, nor do we
No, that's fine.
Uh, but, but if your, your options are, take the vote, or talk to them again, and bring it back. And, and try to come, and try, try to come up with, uh, you know, with a meeting of the minds, so to speak.
In other words, uh, Mr. Fleming, I think what he asking you is, is, and I heard the gentleman say that they, they need to, uh, file a petition with the state to try to get another road cut in there for access. Because then I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna vote to deny, so it ain't gonna pass here tonight, so, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. Uh, so, uh
Well, let's, let's use this, then, let's just go and have the vote, and y'all, we'll, we'll regroup after that, how about that? Just, because y'all have been very pleasant, very good, and the folks showed up, that's very good, let's just go and have the vote, and we'll move on.
All right, that sounds good to me, you made a motion.
All right, is there, is there a motion?
I moved to deny.
I need a reason.
And what is the reason?
Uh, and the reason being for the future, and the purpose of maintaining the quality of life for the citizens that's west of that, that, uh, property, and also, uh, safety concern, because just yesterday morning, he had a major accident right there at that intersection, at Richardson Road. Uh, so, safety is the main reason why, because with eighteen-wheelers pulling over to try to turn in that little small road, Richardson Road, there gonna be some major accidents happening right there.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, Tonya, did you get the reason?
I did.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made to deny, and properly second, all those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
Going back to item number one, Andre Bruny, representing Cobalt Realty, requesting to rezon one lot at the northeast corner of Woodley Road and Woodley Park Drive from a O-one to a B-two Q district to add a daycare use.
Looks like nobody's here.
Is anyone here for a rezon, okay, come on up.
Good afternoon, my name is Shaquita Thomas.
Could you move the mic up?
I'm sorry, um, good afternoon, my name is Shaquita Thomas, I am looking for to rezon
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
Okay.
Let, let those so that we make sure we're here.
Okay.
All right, let's try it again.
Good evening, my name is Shaquita Thomas, I am looking to rezon twenty-six O-one and twenty-six eleven Woodley Park Drive to be zoned to be used for, um, childcare center.
So, the, the barber shop, beauty shop is off the, is off, is just gonna be a daycare?
When the original, um, rezoning was put in at the time, it was like, um, beauty, um, salons, barber shops, tattoo shops, and doctor's offices in there. Well, I came and I, um, I have the whole property that will be used for a learning center.
Okay.
In addition to the beauty shop and everything, uh?
I'm the only thing
So, you're dropping the beauty shop?
No, sir. Nothing.
I've talked to the owner, Mr. Bruny, he wants to keep those uses and add a daycare use.
Okay.
Because if she goes away, he can still do barber shops, beauty shops, things like that.
So, right now, she just wants to do the beauty shop, I mean, the daycare?
But he wants to keep the beauty shop, barber shop, beauty related services.
Yeah, because we, we actually queue the beauty shop, barber shop, and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And he just want to add daycare.
Okay. But, it's not gonna be the beauty shop and the daycare altogether?
Um, I will be occupying both units
Okay.
For, um
The daycare?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, there's no barber shop?
Sir.
There is no barber shop?
No barber shop.
Got it.
No beauty shop, just, just
Uh, uh, how did this get brought before the city council?
Um, when I
As, as a daycare?
Well, when I received, when I started purchase, well, leasing the property from him, he thought it was already, um, in the motion to be zoned, to be, could be used for a childcare center, he didn't know that it was stipulations that was put on it at first. So, when he told me that, I decided to come myself and talk with to get it rezoned, so I can use it as a childcare facility.
With the city council?
I don't know how I got here.
No, 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 I'm saying, somebody brought it to the city council.
Um
And that's what I'm asking, who brought it to the city council?
Mr. Andre.
Not you?
Well, I called, I could never get him.
You could never what?
I could never, um, get him on the phone. The councilman of the district, is that what you're asking me?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, it was brought before us, we passed what you wanted, or what somebody wanted, uh, representing you. And then, when it comes to the city council, it's not what we passed, it's something else. And I'm asking you, is who brought it to the city council as a daycare, instead of the beauty shop?
Well, Mr. Andre had originally spoke with them to have it, um, to have the daycare, um, come in, and I came to the last meeting last week to also speak, because I have the property.
Do you own the property?
I don't own the property.
You do not?
I'm leasing, Mr. Andre owns the property.
I believe
How, how, how do we have somebody that's
I believe the, the owner spoke to the, the councilman,
I can't hear.
And it went ahead to, um, city council, um, they asked us what we thought they should do, and we felt it was better that it was referred back to you for reconsideration.
Okay, so, but, the, the, my question, to make sure we're the owner of this property has sent you to represent him tonight?
Yes, sir, he sent me last week.
You're his advocate tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we do, so, that, that, that's the way it works to make the connection, because otherwise, she wouldn't have any, any input into it. Okay, fair enough.
My, my other question is, who has started the daycare already, uh, uh, putting the stuff in the yard and, and, uh, starting building for daycare when it wasn't, when it hasn't been zoned for daycare? Who's, who did that?
I started it, because I started it before I knew it was in zone. For, for the, when I called for zoning, it was in zone. And then I, I found out that the first meeting was coming up, and I called Mr. Andre, and I let him know that it was zoned for office. That's when he told me the rezoning was already in progress.
So, my question, Ms. Ingram, is, uh, because we had this queue on it, as barber shop, beauty shop, and beauty related services. Can we just not add daycare with the queue still on it?
Yes, that's what you would be doing.
That's, yeah, so, we could do that.
Just add a daycare.
Add the daycare with it still being qualified, because our main thing is, we don't want no liquor stalls and smoke shops and all that right there in front of that school. And that was one of the reasons why we queued it. So, I don't see the harm in just, uh, adding a daycare on to the queue.
Well, let's see, what, anybody else get something?
Is there anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is John Owens, I live at three-five-three Eagerdon Road, Spring Valley. Uh, our issue is not with the daycare center itself. The issue came up that this was zoned for a barber shop. We don't have any problem with any business coming into our area that's gonna be an asset to the community and to our neighborhoods. The problem was, or we felt disrespected when it changed from, uh, having it queued for a barber shop and beauty salon, that immediately it turned away from that and went to a daycare. Now, it seems like once they got this thing changed from an office to a business, everything changed, and without any word, or, or without any concern from the neighborhoods, or, or, not what can change. What is Mr. Andre decides now, he wants to put a liquor store in there? He, he can, he can apply for that, could he not?
No, he could not, if they put the restriction, he could not.
Well, they put the restriction on there, it could only be a barber shop.
Right, and she started to put the stuff in there for the daycare, but it doesn't actually operate yet, does it? Okay.
This started immediately after it got changed. One day, one day, there was nothing there, the next day, they got dirt to put a playground in, and then from dirt to mulch, from mulch to a privacy fence.
Right.
Without any concerns, or without any, any changes that were notified, that we were notified of. And it just seems like now, if you change it now, what else can be going on? And Mr. Andre's not even here to address the issues.
Just a second.
I'm, I'm, I'm finished. Uh, I don't wanna take so long, we, um, I gotta get to a meeting myself now with the community association. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry.
Um, when I received this property, this property had, it was originally operating, the side that had the doctor's office on there, he was in the process of moving out. This property, I feel like with my learning center being there to occupy this property, it will, it would cut back less crime in that, in that part. A lot of the units, everything was stolen, you had people literally sleeping in the building, it was a overflow of the building. Since I have took, um, since I started leasing that building, I have cameras up, we have the building locked and secured. Um, like, we're literally cleaning it up around there, we're not coming in with no disrespect or anything. Now, when I leased this property, from my understanding, it was already leased to be, um, anything commercial. Um, when I started the process of going through the zoning, what we have to go through for childcare, then I found out it wasn't zoned for what I needed to be zoned for.
Did you talk to the neighbors?
Did I talk to who?
The neighbors, the people in the area?
No, I didn't.
Did you talk to them?
No, because Woodley Road has daycares, like, literally...
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but I mean, but did you talk to the people, though?
No, I did not.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
Let me say one thing real quick, and I'm gonna be out of here, I promise. Mr. Andre's put her in a bad position. His credibility as to say, to do what he said he was gonna do, is shot for me. I can't trust someone who sets her up like that, to just, okay, yeah, you can do it now, and, and, but not let her know that this, this building was queued for only one thing. So, I don't know how you can trust him.
So you would rather have a barber shop?
I would rather have any business gonna do things on the, on the up and up. Not cut backdoor deals, and not, uh, put people in, in a bad situation with bad feelings. Again, my problem is not with her, it's with the property owner, who put her in this situation.
One question, before you leave, one question. Do you have a problem with it being a daycare center?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And none of the residents that I've spoken with have a problem with it.
It's the principle and, and...
It's the principle and the thing, and where this can lead to now, that you can't trust a Mr. Andre.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ma'am, uh, Ms. Thomas, you can come back up. So you don't have a problem with it, with adding the, uh, the queue as a daycare only? So, so the only thing that can be there is beauty shop, uh, barber shop, beauty-related services, and a daycare, that's it?
That's all.
And, and, and that's what you requested, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
All right, I make a motion that we add or, not in, but or, day, or daycare. Because I, I'd hate to see a barber shop next to a daycare. So, it, it could be the beauty-related services, barber shop, beauty salon, or a daycare.
Tanya, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you understand what he's asking?
Yes.
Uh, will you please take that back to Mr. Andre, uh, Mr. Bruny?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right, a motion has been made.
Second.
A motion is made, and property is second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number two, Olson Land Partners, representing TWAS Properties, requesting final approval of TWAS Montgomery, Alabama, plat number one, on the north side of Atlanta Highway, in a B-two district.
Did we send everybody home, Tanya?
This is their second no-show.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandon Hebron, uh, address is one-zero-six-five-four Spring Tree Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven-zero-eight-one-zero. Uh, we're here tonight representing Olson Land Partners, uh, and we're here just simply requesting approval of a plat to legally create a lot. Uh, we do have a building permit for a title wave car wash, uh, that's currently under construction, so this is kind of one of the procedural items to, to close this out.
You did say car wash, right?
Auto spa.
Auto spa, excuse me, auto spa.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions from members of the commission?
I think this may, I think this makes like the fifteenth auto spa.
Yeah, auto spa, yeah, it has, a lot of them, but... Are there any questions from members of the audience? Just leave it at that. And you say you're from Baton Rouge?
Yes, sir.
Baton Rouge?
That's it.
Is that red baton?
Something like that.
All right, uh, no questions, comments, uh, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Now, a second.
A motion has been made, and property is second, all those in favor? Those opposed?
Mr. Hawkins? How'd you vote?
I approve.
Four?
Four.
Four-one, motion fails.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, Flowers and White Engineering, representing Roosevelt McCorvey, requesting to rezon six lots on the east side of Taylor Road, um, from an office district to a B-three district.
Good evening, Brad Flowers, Flowers and White Engineering. We were here last month, uh, requesting rezoning of several parcels that are on Quad Parkway. Uh, if you remember, Quad Parkway is located just to the east of Taylor Road. Uh, it comes off, um, of a service access drive coming in, and you can see it right there. Uh, the lots that are in question that are up for the rezoning, uh, front Taylor Road, Quad Parkway to the east of that, there's office zoning further east of that. And then, once you pass, uh, the existing, uh, office, then you start getting into single-family estate lots, and then some of the, uh, Stirbridge, uh, lots, the Oaks, I believe it is, that it's down to the southeast corner. To the north is Dr. Roosevelt McCorvey, who we're here on his behalf. Uh, and basically, what we've asked is the six lots that are there, uh, on Quad Parkway be rezoned to a B-three. Uh, basically, to mirror what we've got on the west side of Taylor Road, similar type applications, uh, and more than happy to queue that. I believe, uh, there was a meeting, HOA meeting, I was not able to attend, uh, but Mr. Ed here was, and I'm sure he would be more than happy to give you details of that.
Ed Fleming with Hodges Commercial Real Estate, representing Dr. McCorvey.
Okay.
That was a meeting.
Yeah.
The meeting was good. What we're asking for is no more than what's already there. The Ace Hardware to the, uh, what is that, uh, north of that, is Zone B-two. And then, there's lots that Alpha has on south of that, next to the Church of the Highlands, that are Zone B-two. So we're asking that these six lots be zoned B-three, so we can try to do some retail and try to sell some lots. The, uh, property was put together back in two thousand and nine, and since then, there's only been one lot sold. And you go across the street, across Taylor Road, and, uh, there's just multiple, multiple properties that have sold in the last two years. Uh, so, the demand for retail space i- is there, and that's what we're looking to do with these lots.
Well, we might be wrong, but according to our papers, uh, to the north is Ag-one, to the east and south is O-one, and to the west is Pud.
Well...
Now, uh, do we have, do we...
The Ace, the Ace Hardware is Zone B-two, and that's right there on the entrance to get into Stirbridge. And then, if you come down all the way to, um, the Highlands Turnin', off of there, those lots there that Alpha has are Zone B-two.
Tanya, is that correct?
Which is... I, I've got their paperwork on it.
Mike, can you move up to the zoning map? Go up, other way. Keep going. See the B-two at the north end of that map? Right there, that's where the Ace Hardware is, that he's referring to.
But that's not next, but that's not next to this particular...
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, it, it's, there is a B-two, but it's not next to this, is what I, is, is what I was getting at.
But there is B-two on the other end, next to the Church of the Highlands as well, so it's not like it's, it's out of the, out of the norm of B-two to be close to B-two.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions from members? All right, uh, members of the audience, comments, questions? Whoa!
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Terry Allison, I'm president of the HOA, I live off Lennox Way in Stirbridge. Um, thank you for letting us be here to speak to you. I'd like to start by saying that a comprehensive land use plan has been in place in this area for quite some years. We don't think spot zoning should be allowed in this instance. The owner's desiring to change the zoning of six of his own lots separately to something far removed from the original intent, from office all the way to commercial B-three zoning. This area already carries a heavy commercial burden. There's a sort of hodgepodge of commercial businesses across the west side of Taylor Road. It's a very dense area with little planning as to style, design, and intent. All four corners of On and Taylor are densely populated as well with commercial, and it stretches in all directions. North side of Taylor Road, across our main entry, is as well, and down to the border at Ray Thornton and beyond. All this congestion puts a very heavy burden on the health and safety of our residents by the increase in traffic and unsafe drivers. Our residents bought here in the Oaks and along Chadburn Crossing, knowing these specific lots were zoned for office use. There are fifty-eight homes in the Oaks with a current value of three to four hundred thousand dollars each. This comes to seventeen to twenty-three million dollar collective investment, and that's not counting Chadburn Crossing. This new zoning will have a direct negative impact on the value of these people's homes. Coming back to the lots in question, the piece of property budding these on the north, as you mentioned, are, and I quote, "zoned Ag-one but priced as commercial," according to the Hodges Real Estate website. So that is coming, and will directly affect the Chadburn Crossing residents, and indirectly those families on Hammond Drive. This specific rezon before the board is just step one. Next step will be the lots on the east side of Quad Parkway, and will go around Sedwick Court. This would set the precedent for the Capital Farmers Market property next to it, which is boarded on the north and south by Stirbridge residents as well. The hearing last month was tabled so the representatives, re, excuse me, representatives of the owner could meet with the Stirbridge HOA, and a few homeowners to discuss alternatives. At this meeting, Mr. James Reed encouraged us to come up with a list of viable business alternatives we would be amenable to, and this was next to impossible, because it's the nature and the design of the business in question. For instance, a coffee house would be great, but not if it's a metal building with a drive-through and a loudspeaker staying open until midnight. It's the style and design that matter, both for aesthetics and for health and safety reasons. Restaurants and store dumpsters have now become a magnet for people to get in, go through, and take things, creating not only a mess, but a safety hazard to both themselves, those that have to clean up, and to those that live around the area. This behavior attracts rats, rodents, and maybe even desperate people looking for more. That being said, the board and a few residents had a meeting last Monday, the eighteenth, to discuss cooperation with the owner. At the end, it was voted by the board to agree to come up with viable list of alternatives, as we were asked to do, and have a meeting with Dr. McCorvey to discuss. I learned later that his daughter and son-in-law also attended our meeting, with most of us believing they were residents of the Oaks. In a phone call the next day with Mr. Mickey Phillips, we learned the owner had withdrawn his invite to work with us on this project. And I know that project with Ace Hardware was brought up, and it's my understanding it was voted down for restaurant use, and then zoned for a specific use as a Ace, as a hardware store. The compromises reached while the neighborhood was under the peruse of Alpha Properties, and the board back then didn't have much, um, say in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Jim Dryjansky, I live at eight-six-three-seven Vintage Way. Um, lady and gentlemen of the commission, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity for me to come and join with my neighbors and give voice to some of our concerns. Specific thanks to you, Mr. Reed, um, for fostering a dialogue. So, as we met with, uh, with the representatives for the property development, I was struck by the fact that it seemed to me that the onus for coming up with a viable plan, being placed on the neighborhood, opposing the development, seemed out of order. Maybe even inappropriate, and somewhat presumptuous on behalf of the developer, that of course, this would be B-three, and we would have to choose the least bad of an alternative. It didn't sit well, and yet, we remained open. We met, and I've gotta tell you, so as I, as I reviewed the zoning regulation and the purpose of it, it's to protect the health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of our community. I focused in on that term for general welfare. I have great respect for Dr. McCorvey. He has been a pillar in this community. He's a generous man. In fact, of May of this year, he donated six hundred thousand dollars worth of property to Alabama State, uh, University. But this issue of this development of this is about his private interest. Now, we had a chance to meet with Dr. McCorvey following our, our last meeting. Even he relayed that, at, when he purchased this property, it was with the idea that he would build a home and a family. And his wife, I guess, gave a veto, because it was a little too far out in the distance, and I understand that. This was in the early nineteen nineties. But even thirty years later, it's still an attractive spot because of the zoning that's in place. We love our neighborhood, because it's livable, it's walkable, it's jogable, and our children can play freely. Changing the character by going to B-three for this is entirely inappropriate. I'm very glad that Terry pointed out that the conversion of that property for the Ace Hardware was in consultation with the neighborhood. So I'm just surprised that as we offered them to continue deliberation, that they refused it and brought it for your decision tonight. Thank you all very much for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Sir? Were you gonna speak, no, were you gonna speak? Okay, could, uh, if, if you don't, come on, come up to the mic. Do you have some other points?
I have somewhat different points. If you'd like to continue to hear from the homeowners...
Absolutely, no, no, absolutely.
I'd like to first start by introducing myself. My name is Monae Gaines. You might know me as Monae McCorvey Gaines. I am Dr. McCorvey's daughter.
Okay.
I did attend the meeting. It was my understanding that it was a public meeting. I attended the meeting to see if there might be something that I could learn with respect to this negotiation. What I heard did not really sound as though there was an effort for a negotiation. Instead, what I heard were homeowners saying that if they approved anything, it would be five limited things, because they didn't want to approve anything else. Now, my father has owned the property for quite some time. Initially, it was thought that it would be our home. He found a home someplace else. B-three would make it more marketable. It's my understanding that, um, Hodges offered the opportunity for the homeowners to decide on how they would like the property to be zoned with respect to having architectural review of anything decided on. And that was not something that was favorable... And that was not something that was favorable to them. My impression that they were not willing to actually negotiate in good faith was part of the reason that negotiations did not proceed. If I had felt that they were genuinely interested in working with us, I am all about working to resolve things through inadequate means with the path of least resistance, and I would have conveyed that wholeheartedly. And we are still ready to do that if I believed that they were ready to do that as well. Instead, I heard people calling out price amounts for the plots that were incorrect and inaccurate and just saying that they just didn't want this side of the street to look like that side of the street. This is a very frustrating time for both parties. I understand that completely. I also want to remark that this property isn't directly in line with Sturbridge. The Oaks is the closest, and I don't know that there's anybody here from the Oaks to say that they are upset. Well, I didn't realize that.
No problem, no problem, no problem.
But yet, they were not at that homeowners' meeting. Were you?
Okay, okay.
And I didn't hear the dissent from them.
Yes, ma'am.
But if there was a genuine issue of working together, we're still ready to do that. But to say that we provided you with a list and we asked you to limit it and tell us what you don't want, and then they said, well, that shouldn't be our responsibility. To tell you, hey, we're going to let you decide or make sure that anything that gets placed there, you have final review of it, and you say, no, that's not what we want either. We just don't know what else to do to actually communicate our willingness to work with you. I apologize. Thank you for letting me...
No, 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 no. No reason to apologize, ma'am. No reason to apologize. Absolutely not. Sir, if you could come up forward? No, no, no. This gentleman, sit down. And who's over from the Oaks? Come up, come forward. And the first young lady that spoke. The first young lady that spoke. Now, my question to you, sir, is this. I suggest you guys have another dialogue, a serious dialogue, and you explain to them, wait a minute, let me finish. And you explain to them what you are willing to queue it as, which is, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that, we're not... Wait a minute, let me finish.
No, go ahead.
I would suggest that you get with both of those parties right there. You know, however many want to come from you, however many want to come from you, and really get down to a dialogue. Now, the alternative to that is, we take a vote right now, and you see there's only five people up here.
Oh, I got it.
And so I strongly suggest that you guys get together and try to work this out. Are you willing to do it?
We were willing to do it initially. There were a lot of personalities in that...
Just give me a yes or no. Just give me a yes or no. Are you willing to do it?
I'm not the dictator. Hang on a second.
Okay, well, I'm not. Sir, sir, right here. Are you willing to do it?
Y'all need to come up to the mic and speak, please.
Okay. Well, I'm Donald Powell. I live at 3760 Weston Place in the Oaks. We built our house there 10 years ago, this past August. There was pretty much nothing there. There were a couple of spec houses. We were the first ones to actually design a house on our own. We purchased that area after... I've lived in Montgomery almost 50 years, lived on Burbank Drive for 30 years, over 30 years. Saved up our money, decided to move out here, found a house we liked, place we liked. One of the things we really liked about it was it was a nice, quiet area. We figured if at some point if they put offices up there, that's not going to be a problem. It's not going to impede anything because it's going to be during the day. Nighttime's going to be nice and quiet. If you start changing things to, I don't know, the rules, B3, B2, whatever it is, you start putting all these businesses over there, you really change the complexion of that whole neighborhood. The property values will go down. Our children, we take that little road right there to go to the pool in the Sturbridge area, it's going to be a lot more traffic, it's just not going to be safe. And we purchased the property with the zoning that was in place. And I feel bad for the doctor and the lady that just spoke that says it's more marketable if they do it as a B3. Well, I'm sure it would be, but we purchased our house with the understanding that this was our office lots. And I feel bad that they can't market them as office lots, but that's kind of the rules. We bought in with these rules, with these understandings. And so that's why I'm opposed to it.
Okay. But are you willing to get with him and try to work something out? That's my question.
Well, I mean, I'm not in the leadership of the committee or anything. We just came to... I'm not opposed to talking about anything, but I don't see a way that they're going to find something if they want to change it to a B3 when it's supposed to be office lots.
Okay.
When we built these properties with the understanding that it was going to be a neighborhood kind of thing.
Okay.
So...
Ma'am, do you have an answer? Do you have an answer?
Mr. Reed, respectfully, we offered. I don't know what she thought she heard in there. It was a lively debate, as any group of people with differing opinions have. We offered. She declined.
Okay. So your answer to my question is what? Are you willing to talk with them again?
We request a vote now, please.
No, it's not up to you. It's up to him. Okay, clearly, clearly. We're not getting anywhere with this.
Yeah, so, Mr. Reed, commission. Our client came and did the best they could. They asked to qualify it any way they could qualify it to satisfy the neighbors. They asked, hey, we'll give you review of all their architectural plans. One of my questions when I sat and looked at that, we have very few that are right there from the Oaks. There are some here. I don't dispute that. The majority of the people that spoke live in the backside, Lennox Way and Vintage Way are on the far southeast corner of Sturbridge. They don't even come up this way. They can't come that direction to come out. The gentleman that said he uses this road to go to the pool, he's actually trespassing if he goes beyond this because it goes directly into Robert, Mr. McCorvey's, and to get into the pool. So the only connection point is Taylor Road East for a short section that is a joint use. I don't think you're ever going to get to a compromise between them at this point. We request a vote.
Even if you explain to them, you know, you're willing to queue this, you're willing to queue that, you're willing to queue this, and it's, you still don't feel that again?
We've tried.
Okay.
And if it comes to architectural plans, and that's their biggest thing, you can build the ugliest office in the world and put it right there. I mean, that's not their complaint. Their complaint is just that they don't want to be 3. And if we're not going to get there without a qualification and them even willing to look at qualifications, then we're wasting city time, city dollars, their time and my time.
Okay, well...
So I say at this point, we take a vote and move forward.
Well, we don't get paid, so we're not wasting our dollars. No, no.
They do.
That's a joke, that's a joke.
They do. We got lives, so anyway.
All right. Did you have something to add, ma'am?
I did. I think the comment said, and I live in Old Gate...
Name, address?
Kim Schottaker, 8500 Old Gate.
Okay.
The comment I heard was that they can't sell them as office. Maybe, why is that? Why are people not buying them for office use? And my comment would be, maybe it's the congestion and the hodgepodge of commercial use on the opposite side of the street, which adds congestion. I know that I have teenage drivers on Vaughn Road, and there are so many entrances and multiple entrances to so many businesses on Vaughn Road that it is so unsafe to even drive through there, near the Dunkin' Donuts, the Walmart, the car wash that's going in, the Taco Bell. It's so congested that there's extremely high percentage of car accidents in that one section of Vaughn Road. So I think, I know I can speak for these people on my right, they just want it to remain as office use because probably, I may not be speaking for them well here, but for me personally, it would cut down on the intensity of the traffic is the main concern I have.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You're ready for a vote? All right. A motion is in order. All right, Tanya, we have no motion.
Okay. No action.
No action. All right. Thank you very much. There's no action. Thank you very much. So it did not pass. No action means it did not pass. You need five votes to pass, and so it did not pass so they can take it to the city council if they choose to.
It's still zoned office.
Does everybody understand? Are there any questions?
It's still zoned office, just like it was when you came in here. There was no change.
Does this mean that a denial won't be recorded? Is that what it is?
It means what he just said.
Either way. It was not.
I see. Okay.
It will remain the way it is, as far as we're concerned. All right.
Could y'all go out in the lobby so we can continue the meetings? Appreciate it. Item number five. Item number five, Everett Dominguez, requesting to rezone one lot on the west side of Woodley Road, as known as 3084 Woodley Road, from an office district to a B2 commercial district.
Is this the one five?
Yes. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Everett Dominguez.
Could you speak into the mic a little louder?
Sorry. Good afternoon. My name's Everett Dominguez, and I am requesting a rezoning of 3084 Woodley Road from office to commercial. My intent is to open a Central and South American grocery/convenience store. As a store, we will be offering options to customers to pay their phone bills, utility bills, purchase money orders, and cash checks. We will also have phone tops and recharges that offer international and domestic phone calls. Most importantly, the community will have access to fresh produce, bread, canned goods, and traditional items from Central and South America.
Okay. Are there any questions from the members of the board? Are you going to request, and this is long range and it might be off-base, but are you going to request a liquor license at any time?
No, sir.
Sir?
No, sir. I don't plan to sell any liquor or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Can we queue that?
I'm sorry?
Can we queue it?
Yes, sir.
With the qualification that says it won't ever be used?
Yes, sir, correct.
Do you understand what he just asked?
Yes, that we will never intend to apply or anything for liquor or any of that.
And you don't have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem, sir. It was never in mind for that.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments from members of the audience? All right. A motion is in order.
Motion to approve with the queue that states that there will be no alcohol, so...
When you say alcohol, are you strictly talking about a package store or also beer and wine?
I'm talking about alcohol.
Alcohol across the board. Okay?
Now, that's what you just said was fine with you, right?
Yes, correct.
No alcohol beverages or anything that has to do with alcohol could not be sold in this store.
Yes, sir.
And you're fine with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
And are you fine with it being queued as only a grocery/convenience store?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good point.
Okay. You got that, Tanya?
Yes.
Okay. A motion is in order.
Mr. Hawkins?
That was a motion.
Okay, that was a motion, a second. I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Who said that?
Mr. Hawkins.
Second down there. A motion been made in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? All right.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, Alabama Land Surveyors, representing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Montgomery, requesting final approval of Anderson Pratt number one on the northeast corner of Furnace Street and Sixth Street in an M3 district.
My name is Danny Webb, Webb Builders, and we're here tonight to, I guess, a rezone, not a rezone, but replating of the property over there at 1500 Furnace Street in Montgomery, at the Anderson Company.
Are there any questions from members of the commission? Are there any questions from the members of the audience? Comments? Questions or comments? All right. A motion is in order.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion been made in property second. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Item number eight, Jerry Kaiser Building, requesting to rezone one parcel containing three acres at the corner of Wetumka Highway and Old Wetumka Highway from an Ag 2 district to a B2 district.
Good evening. My name's Kyle Kaiser, representing Jerry Kaiser Builder. This property, we're requesting it be rezoned from agriculture to B2. This property has been, being outside the city limits, it operated for over 50 years as a restaurant, so it's been in a commercial business type use for a long period of time. Yzel's Catfish Cabin was there probably the longest tenant. Ochoke Steakhouse was one of the more recent ones, but just the age of the building got to the point it just didn't make economic sense to continue to put any additional dollars or investment into that, into the existing structure. And so the building has sat vacant for over a year while we waited for an opportunity to do something else with it. So we're wanting to basically be rezoned to be used as a Dollar General type store. So there also would be additional retail that could be built there in the future for small, additional retail opportunities for small tenants to occupy on the property as well, so...
Now, you say a Dollar General type store or...
It actually is. It's Dollar Tree, I believe, is actually.
Are you saying?
Yeah.
You said Dollar Tree type store. Is it going to be a Dollar...
It's going to be a Dollar Tree is who we're talking to about going on the property, so...
Okay. All right. Got that clear. All right. Any other questions from members? Are there any questions, comments from people from the audience? You got one gentleman there. Come forward, sir, if you don't mind. Come to the mic.
Malin Ashcraft.
Could you give us your name and address, please? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes. Malin Ashcraft, 4660 Old Wetumka Highway. I have the RV park behind him, and I have Doggy Daycare to the side of this property. I'm not against anything going against this property, other than asking him, are they going to put in another septic system?
Yes.
They're going to put that. Can we get that in writing?
It has to have. There is no city sewer there, so they'll have to have a new system. The old septic system, which is part of the... I understand where he's coming from with this and I understand his concerns. If you can see in the photo down at the bottom, you can see the old sewer lagoon... you can see the old sewer lagoon right there. And that lagoon was used for the restaurant. Of course, a restaurant has a very large water usage, and so that was one of the reasons that it had to be vacated because the system was not adequate. We've actually have, have had conversations in the past because there were some issues when it was a restaurant. And so, but to get straight to the point, that sewer system, I mean, the, the septic system is going to be abandoned, and there'll be an entirely new system designed, approved by the Health Department. And so anything, any new development that existing septic system will not be utilized.
I have no...
Does that answer your question, sir?
That's fine with me, as long as I, it doesn't seep on the... It's been seeping when the vessel was there. It would seep on my, into the RV park. So I have no problem with that.
It's a, it's a raised lagoon, so when they did, they built it, it sits up. And so there was an issue, I think, at some point where the, they had gone in and cut the slope in the back on this property line when he put in the last RVs because it had been encroached over his property for a long period. And when they did, there was some issues with the sewer seeping. But now it'll be a new, modern system that'll be done totally different, so.
And a lot more expensive than what they used to be.
That's correct.
I have no problem.
You're good now, sir? All right. Absolutely. All right. Any other questions from members of the audience? All righty. Motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
Item number nine.
Thank you, sir, good luck. Good luck.
Item number nine, Monument Land Services, representing Jerry Kaiser, requesting final approval of DPG Kaiser Subdivision One at this same location.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Kramer. I'm with Monument Land Services, the surveyor for the same piece of property. And we're doing the record plat for this to divide it into two lots.
Okay. Are there any questions? Comments? Are there any questions, comments from members of the audience? All right. A motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion has been made and second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Item number 10, John Ray, representing Marty 2921 LLC requesting to rezone two lots on the East South Boulevard and on Marty Lane from an O2 Office Park District to a B3 Commercial District.
Hello, my name is Kristi Jones. I'm here representing John Ray and Marty 2921 LLC. And we're requesting a rezoning for O2 to B3. Or is that correct? Yeah. From office to commercial.
And what are you gonna use it for?
What are we doing as far as like?
Yeah. What, what?
We just want to open up the, the spaces for more retail and more uncommon businesses.
Are there any questions from members of the audience? Are there any questions from members of the audience? All right. A motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion been made and second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Dodier LLC requesting to rezone 28 parcels containing over 1500 acres on the south side of Hyundai Boulevard between Newham Bridge and I-65 from an Ag 1 district to an M1 line industrial district.
Thank you, guys. My name is Shelby Stringfield. I'm the Director of Industrial Development for Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here representing Dodier LLC as well as the property owners of the 28 parcels being requested to be rezoned.
And you're gonna make it a data center?
Well, this speculative use on the property, we were requesting for M1 zoning, and at this time, anything that would fall within M1 would be acceptable for that type of, for the approval. But speculation would be the potential for having a data center located on the site.
Okay. Any questions from members? Comment?
Hey, have y'all got something in mind now? I mean, I know the data center, but...
Speculatively.
Speculative means a lot of things, you know?
That's right, yes, sir.
Will I see this again is what I'm asking?
Most likely.
Okay. Not, not here?
Correct.
Somewhere. At another, at another meeting?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough.
Are there any questions from members of the audience? Comments? All right. Motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion been made and second. All those in favor?
Okay. Mr. Dunn? How'd you vote, Mr. Dunn?
Those opposed. Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that the last thing?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Need an adjourn.